All right, so it's about 6:01 or so and we're gonna call the regular Select Board meeting to order tonight is November the 15th. And first up is to approve minutes from our last regular Select Board meeting. Let's do that one first as a separate thingy and then do the special ones.
I'd like to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comments, changes, whatever? I thought they looked okay. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, set adjust agenda. Does anybody have anything?
Do we need to approve the special ones?
Oh, thank you.
Make a motion to approve special minutes, just so we don't forget. November 1, November 7, and November 8.
Wait, I thought there was one more.
What?
Wasn't there November 5?
First, five, seven.
There are four, right? Total.
So five isn't here, I'm reading what's written, folks. So anyway, first, November 1st, 7th, and 8th.
Yeah, the 5th, so we have to write the 5th in.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. So those minutes look like, are they in here or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're here.
They're here. They don't look very exciting. These are special minutes for...
It didn't take you too long to write those, I don't think.
That's lucky. So these are minutes for the town manager search interviews and such, and it's all executive session, so the minutes are concise. All right, all in favor of approving those minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Danny for catching me on that. Next, set adjust agenda. Do we need to change anything? You guys didn't add, I asked like three times, you have an executive session on this thing.
I think we should just add one now. It's pretty easy to do.
I think we should do it.
Make a motion, oh, I can't do that.
We need to add executive session at the end about the town manager search.
I got them all three times.
We have to do some planning, so we're gonna do that after old business but before adjourned meeting.
Yes.
It was number two on the list of priorities when we came into it.
Any other, wait a minute, let me just, any other changes, additions, whatever? Got a motion to accept the agenda with an added executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, communication from the audience. Anybody here for anything that's not on, not an item that we're gonna discuss? Wanna communicate anything? All right. Thank you all for coming, it's nice to have an audience.
We can see, we can see.
Oh yeah, that's true.
There's the entire world.
It's a little like a one-way, yeah.
Yeah, we have that audience right there.
Two of them are on television land.
That's why we have leaked helpness. Town manager report given by John Jewett. Tell us something interesting, John.
We've been in contact with an attorney representing the current owner of the property that's adjacent to town property on Central and Hillside Avenue, remember that place in the West End? And we had determined that if we were to, there's a property encroachment, and in order to make that go away, the best thing to do is sell the property to the person or make them move their buildings, which we can't, we could do but we wouldn't want them. And I think in our last meeting we agreed that we were gonna sell it for the appraised value, which is $1,900, it's like a tenth of an acre. And so I sent a letter to them telling them exactly that, that we'd be willing to do that for that appraised value. So hopefully that clears that up and they can change for the title and move ahead. We worked on a step two loan agreement for funding from the state revolving loan fund for $22,600. That will pay for the engineering work related to putting a new roof on the old reservoir. I've been talking with the state about this and they, they said in this process because of our median household income is low enough, continuing to be low enough, even though our salary surveys outdated, they added 4% per year for the last two years to bring it up, kind of close enough. And they said that they would forgive us up to $35,000 for that if the project goes through.
And the quote's less than that?
The quote was less than that. The quote was $22,600 and they would forgive up to $35,000 in engineering costs, so that'll be completely covered if we move forward with the bond. The local salaries, and then I, well, the overall project cost is estimated to be around $420,000. The state would reimburse, I already got that $35,000, but they also would provide us with a $175,000 grant. Now, instead of going negative, 3%, you know, for 30 years, now they'll do 30 years at 0% and give us a $175,000 grant towards that, towards that project. So the bond amount would actually work out, if this was a high bid, it would work out to be about $245,000. We have over $100,000 in the capital fund for that roof, but we won't have to spend it if we bond at 0%. It makes sense, if you're getting 2% or 3% on your money in the bank, you might as well leave it in there and spend the 0% money. And then, currently we're putting $15,000 a year away for that roof, but the total bond payment will only be $9,000, so we'll actually have $6,000 still going into the capital fund. So this is a real, this is like a win in like five different ways for us. So I'd move ahead and do that. I'll have the paperwork, I submitted it all to the state now as drafts, so they can look at it. I think, I think we do have a copy in here of the first couple pages of the planning grant, just so you can see what it looks like. We have, what we'll do is we'll have, next meeting, we'll get together on the 6th, I think it is, and I'll have you guys all sign it. We'll sign the planning grant, we'll sign the overall contract with Aldridge and Elliott, and then we'll move ahead with a bond vote at town meeting for that project.
So we can move ahead with the Aldridge and Elliott part and get it engineered?
Get it all started and everything, and then they'll go to construction in the summertime if the bond vote passes. And I would think if it passes, it's...
They'll probably be in line to, if the bond vote passes, they'll be ready to go out to bid right away, right?
Yes.
Given the timeline.
Yes, yes, the sooner the better on that.
Right. Bond vote will pass in March, right?
Yeah, but if we get Aldridge and Elliott engaged now, they'll probably be ready to roll.
Be ready to roll.
And I just wanna mention too, for those people who don't know, last year when we constructed this waterline project here, the state gave us a zero, gave us a negative 3% interest loan, and then they forgave the whole amount, which was $485,000. And so they forgave that $485,000, then on top of that we had a $175,000 paving grant from the state, VTRAN, so we actually got grants equivalent to $660,000 last year to do infrastructure projects. So, pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, we just wanna keep chasing that money as long as it's available.
Right, yep.
Well, great, thank you for moving us in that direction.
So, yeah, that'll work out really well for us. We're working on finalizing a contract with Cavit Creamery to discharge up to 18,000 gallons of water to the Hardwick wastewater treatment facility on a daily basis. They only, they do it like five days a week, and not year-round. They would do this sometimes during the winter, maybe in the spring, sometimes in the fall, but probably not in the summer.
But they can't spread it.
Because they have plenty of places...
But they can't spread it.
Oh, what's that?
But they can't spread it?
Right, for the most part, yeah. And this is permeate, which comes off from a, from a, their, what's it called?
RO.
Their RO unit. And is essentially clean water with very minor dissolved solids in there and very low organic content, and essentially pretty clean water compared to what we get every day down there. And that could amount to about $360 a day for the town as they discharge. We haven't signed the contract, we haven't finalized anything yet. They don't plan to do the discharge here this winter. They plan on doing some infrastructure changes, and then they would move forward with that a little bit later.
They did a, did they do their trial?
They did their trial, and we ran that trial because we wanted to see what the impacts would be on the wastewater plant. Since we put in the water meters and we did that whole project, we curtailed about 40,000 gallons per day of water going to the wastewater plant. So it's actually, has made the operation of the wastewater plant a little more difficult because we're so low on the end of the design flow, it can handle almost 40,000 gallons a day, it's only getting about 110,000 gallons per day. So what happens is that you're outside of your design standards a little bit, and so bringing this water in would actually help, I think, would help the plant run a little bit better. So, anyway, so they're, they're planning their project out, and they may do it next, start it next spring, I don't know.
Approximately, what is the 360 a day gonna mount up to? How many days are they, you know, five days a week, 52 weeks a year?
They're not gonna, they said it would be intermittent, that they would, that basically, I think this is when they have, when the weather conditions are such that they can't, they can't find a good place to land apply, they'll bring it down here. So we don't know, we'll have to see what happens through, you know, practice and see how it works out.
Just wanna make sure it isn't costing us money.
Well, so like example, 90 days is like $32,000 if they did it 90 days a year.
That's okay.
Right. So essentially, we, you were asking about the trial. So we did a trial run for about, probably about two months, and we didn't, you couldn't tell that they discharged the plant, because we get rainstorms that provide more water than that to the plant, so...
And it's not dirt, it's not really dirty water to start with, so...
As far as what comes into the wastewater plant with normal days, this is not, even in, it's a minor, minor things.
And it's set up so it's easy for them to dump their...
They back down into, into the area and there's a manhole there and they just take the cover off, they dump in there, put the cover back on and drive off.
All right.
So we're finalizing the work on that contract going forward. I posted the, I sent the winter parking ban notice to the Gazette.
Because winter came early?
Well, Tom mentioned today that we better get people off the roads, because if you go up through here, you can see where people are parking here, and there's a truck there with about a foot of snow on it, hasn't moved, and things are really hard for them to plow. And so I think it's caught everybody by surprise, the wildlife and us. And so I sent that out today just to let people know, and actually the parking ban starts today on the 15th and ends on April 15th, so it's a good time to get it out there. And I also did, I brought along, that's the parking ban in case you're all wondering what it looks like. And I also have the winter operations plan, I don't know if, Eric, if you wanted to discuss it at all or not, but every year we have people contacting us wanting to know how come we're not out at midnight, or why we're not out at 2 o'clock in the morning, and generally what happens is if we know a storm's coming, the guys go and try to get some rest, and they go out around 3 o'clock in the morning. And I know especially in icy conditions, people are calling saying, "Well, I only saw that truck once today." Well, each driver's probably driving about 12 miles, and sometimes they can't, sometimes they can't go more than, you know, 6 miles an hour, or even less in icy conditions, they wanna stay on the road too. And so they don't make, they don't seem to get back by people's houses as quickly as people think they should. And that's just the way it works, I mean, it's just, it's hard to drive, those big trucks don't, they'll turn on a dime and they don't stop easy either, so... There's, I don't know if there's anything new, there's nothing new in here, this is the one we use every, do every year.
So let's just say that the winter parking ban, which goes into effect today, bans parking on a public, any public highway in Hardwick from midnight to 6:00 a.m. So don't be parked on public roads between midnight and 6:00 a.m. And you could get a $25 ticket, but the real thing is you actually could get towed.
Just so everyone knows, the routes are planned for, on buses.
Right, so the winter operations plan, the thing to know is the plow route service plan to, to start around 3:00 a.m. is to open up the major bus routes first, and that's the priority for the town road crew, is to open up those. And what else?
Each road takes two passes, which you have to go one way and yet come back the other way.
Right, so it takes them, so they start at 3:00 and they're, they plan to be having them ready for buses by about 6:00 or 6:30 a.m. Don't leave, oh, town's not responsible for stuff left in the right of way, because it could get plowed.
It does.
Yeah, it does. And just, I'm skipping some stuff, but basically, if there's an emergency or something's, you know, in regards to water, sewer, or highway, please call the police department at 472-5475. And they'll get hold of whoever needs to be gotten hold of.
That's interesting.
Which one?
It's an important line.
Go ahead.
Okay, the town of Hardwick has six road crew, and they are tasked with plowing, sanding, and sowing 65 miles of road and town sidewalks. It's not a trivial task, and it starts at 3:00 in the morning. It's not a job I would want, and I'm grateful that they do it.
There you go. It doesn't say that in there, it doesn't say we're grateful, but we are. All right. Moving along, we would have a, do you know what the guys have been up to? There's town, road foreman report. Oh, okay.
Hey, one thing I wanna say too is get your winter tires on, by the way. I followed somebody 10 miles an hour the other day, and the other 30 people behind me weren't that happy either. And he finally pulled over and we passed him, but last time I saw him, he was turning around, I think going home, so... Road foreman's report then, you want me to do that?
Yes, please, you can impersonate Tom.
The guys went out and graded Brown Farm Road, Houston Hill, Dutton Road, Hopkins Hill, Nichols Road, Bunker Hill, and West Hill Extension.
This was before it snowed?
Before it snowed. They hauled gravel to Houston Hill and covered up a couple of those chunks of ledge that keep coming up in the middle of the road, and they put stay mat on Bunker Hill because they wanted to finish up the top dressing Bunker Hill, because they graded from the bottom all the way past the glass house there, and reditched it, reshaped it, and put in new culverts, and did all kinds of stuff. We got, we had a grant, $16,000 grant to do that with, so... They fixed a washout on Mattville Road, they hauled bank run gravel into a washout on the rail trail down here, down towards the western side of town. They cut several trees too, Danny, in the last two weeks, I just wanted to mention that. I don't know where they cut them, but they cut them. And winter has arrived, that's what they wanna make sure we all know, winter has arrived.
Sure, we gotta poke the bear.
Poke the bear. All right, next up is Hardwick electric report given by Mike Sullivan.
Mike's not here.
No. Revenues are up, expenses are down, and...
Our new system that's, our customer service is doing a great job.
There we go. Actually, you know what, I would like to hear from them if they come back, is any update on the idea of the electric car charging stations? That was an interesting idea.
Where are they at with that grant?
Where?
Where are they at with their decision on that grant?
Right. And where are they at with permitting, where are they at with permitting the H11 solar park?
I bet we could get an email once a month from Green Mountain Powers telling us what they wrote down.
In the event of cooperation with an entity like that? Yes.
Yeah, it would be as easy as getting cooperation from across the street.
Yeah, sometimes it feels that. All right, next up, we're making great time. Item one, Select Board to hear proposal by Rachel Kane and Judy Valairs to have the town form a conservation commission. And you guys are both here, so go ahead, we have, we've been given a bit of a heads-up and we got a memo distributed this afternoon. Yes, thank you for...
Way, way, way better.
Better to know in advance.
And we have Judy's information right here too in the handout.
Right, that's what came via email, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So, anyway, give a, introduce yourselves and give us a short spiel and we'll carry on.
Judy Valairs, from Hardwick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members for putting us on the agenda, I know you have a busy night. Rachel and I have been interested in pursuing the establishment of a conservation commission for quite some time, actually it was Rachel's idea originally. So we finally decided to take the plunge, and we're here tonight to get your insights and hopefully your support. You have copies of the handout and I'll just briefly summarize it for you if that's... So there are just over 100 towns in Vermont that currently have conservation commissions, and there's a map that you can look at to see, there are quite a few south of us, big block. And Vermont passed, this is from the town plan, Vermont passed legislation enabling them in 1997. The major goal was to establish community responsibility for natural resources. They have no regulatory power but can advise the towns, the planning commission, and residents on activities to foster the wise use of natural resources. And I thought this was interesting from the town plan, back as far as 1990, the Hardwick town plan has strongly recommended the creation of a conservation commission. So that's been quite a while. Rachel and I talked about what we might do if the conservation commission were established, and there's a list of things here, I'm sure there are lots of other ones. Applying for state grants available to conservation commissions. We do know that the Association of Vermont Conservation Commissions has a grant program, and you can get watershed grants from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and we think, you know, that would be one great thing about a conservation commission, is the ability to get some grants. Hosting community educational events, supporting a natural resources inventory for Hardwick, engaging in activities to improve the health of the Lemoil River, such as monitoring and cleanup, working on mapping and removal of invasive species, street tree planting and other restoration activities, including ripe orchperian restoration, establishing maintenance and maintenance of pollinator habitat, and assisting and advising other town commissions and boards as requested. So we thought it would be nice to have a little budget at the beginning, just to cover any startup expenses we might have. It does cost $50 to join the Association of Vermont Conservation Commission, so that would be one expense. And we've had preliminary discussions with a few people just to make sure we could meet the minimum three-member requirement under the statute, you can have between three and nine members, and there is interest out there, so we're confident we can, you know, find enough people who are willing to commit to being on the commission. So, I'll let Rachel say a few words and then hopefully we'll hear from you.
Yes, thank you. And for the record, I'm Rachel Kane, for the camera, which is always nicer to be behind the camera than in front of it, I've found, but, well, I think Judy's covered it very well, and it is something that I think myself and, and other people in town have wanted that there would be a group that really focuses on our natural resources in town, and maybe could just pay attention to some of the things that are going on in the town that people might notice casually, but maybe this is something that, you know, if a problem is arising, maybe you could nip something in the bud, and also really just safeguard what we do have here. So I'm very interested in, like, having education for townspeople and street tree planting, I really wanna get into that particularly. I know that there's grants out there, and I think that would be a great thing to give to Hardwick. My dad, like 25 years ago, organized tree, street tree planting in East Hardwick, and it's made such a big difference. I mean, they're still growing, because they, it was over 20 years ago, and he just kind of pulled it off, you know, with the help of the electric department. He asked them to come over and they dug the holes with their auger, and he got, we got like 30 trees planted in two days, so I think, you know, you get a few people together, we could, there's a lot we could do, but, so... We don't even know, I don't know what a conservation commission really could do, because it's still kind of exploring what a group like this could do. I think it depends on the interests of the members and desires in town, so that's something that we're also exploring, you know, what we could do. So we are, Judy and I have been talking to people of, you know, different stripes really in town, you know, to try and get a nice base of people that do care and are interested. I guess that's, so we're starting here tonight to see, to get some feedback, and to also get a better understanding of how we would form a group, what the select board or the town would, you know, how it's actually created, you know, these are things that we don't really know yet. So that's, so we'd like to hear, you know, from the board, what, sort of advise or what our next step would be in creating this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll go first. I read, I read, just looked at Vermont statutes annotated online, which does say that in some towns anyway, a select board can create a conservation commission, although it basically says, I guess, kind of depends on your charter of your town, whether that needs to be a townwide vote or the select board, and I, wasn't entirely crystal clear to me, looking at our charter. So we, John has a call-in to Bill Davies, I believe, about that, so I think we're, our town lawyer, to find out how in our case it would be created. It's probably the select board, is my read.
It says the select board can appoint.
What's the other, what's?
Town meeting.
Town meeting. Town vote or select board vote?
Right.
And I don't know the answer.
So, no. It looked to me like it probably was, the select board, it was probably a power granted to the select board.
So appoint the commission.
But it's kind of a broad, like the select board gets the power to create any other committees or whatever as deemed necessary or something, so I think it falls to the select board, but it'd be nice to have a legal meeting on that.
There must be a difference between the commission and the committee, I don't know what difference.
Well, right, so just in case there's a difference.
Right. I have no idea, but there's gotta be, otherwise it...
Yeah, and the whole, everything that, well, or the general layout of what a conservation commission can do is laid out in statute as well. So, and basically, like Judy said, it plays a, can play an advisory role and inventory things and...
Probably whatever happens going forward, if it was done at town meeting or by the select board, the select board would in any case be appointing the board.
Yes, the board members.
Yeah, I think they're on staggered times when they're initially created, so the select board would be appointing those that are...
When they're initially created.
Because they're at off times to the town meeting, so that they...
But then after that, it's all, it needs five-year terms or something, they're pretty long.
Or are they elected at town meeting?
Nope, they're appointed by the select board.
For sure.
Once it's created, for sure.
So I would say we'd be the ones that are created, but I don't know.
What, once this is created, does it become one of the groups that applies for an allocation at town meeting, or does this become a line item in our budget?
Probably would be, more likely to be a line item in the budget, rather than a...
Be like the planning commission, or the development review board.
Or the rec committee, or the library, or, you know, just be like that, probably. So anybody, so I think maybe?
Yeah, we got a lot of...
Other people are here, are you, does anybody wanna say anything about this item? Any interest in planning street trees?
Anybody have any answers, or?
Legal guidance?
See how we work, we're like, I don't know.
I think it's a great idea. You know, the details need to be worked out. I think as, it would be nice to have a group of people whose job it is to know what's going on in conservation, you know, and if we've got an issue, well, talk to the conservation commission, that's their, that's their bailiwick, that's their, their area of expertise. And, you know, doing these activities, you know, I think it's a good idea.
Wonder if it would, it somehow would have to figure out its relationship with the recreation committee, because it seems like there might be some overlap. I don't know, we'd have to figure that out, to establish how they relate to each other. It'd be a problem, but I'm just saying that there's, you know, some, I know the, I think recreation committee is, it does the, like the bird walk and stuff at Hazen, and they're talking about education here, so there's, there'd be some overlap. Might be a good thing, I'm just saying.
It's typically the trails committee that organizes those, the rec committee also does, like, activities that, I think, Mattville Pond and other places, so...
It's usually...
But, you know, this, there are, so yeah, I agree, there are places where we already have groups who are organizing the recreational component.
Yeah.
But I think what we don't have, I mean, like Rachel's saying, is like planning, like organizing street trees and, or actually going around and finding places where we have, like, a problem with invasives or something. We don't really have a group that deals with that kind of thing.
I'm supportive, I was gonna say that, I was just saying, do some things to figure out.
Is this something you envision being in charge of, like, town forest and...
So by statute, they're not really in charge of anything, they can supply advice as requested, but it would be a group that would be interested in those things, and maybe be aware, so...
Paying attention.
Well, I've personally worked with dozens of conservation commissions, so... Well, I've personally worked with dozens of conservation commissions, so they can be a good thing, but they can also, you know, be a bad thing if they're single focused on a single issue. So I guess to make.
So it's important to.
To shake it out, what you actually want to do and stuff like that, that's why.
Does a, does forming a group like this require, like, does a group have to have like a charter or a mission statement or anything?
It's a bylaws, definitely. That was part of, that was in part of, I believe it was, and some of the language in there.
Really?
Well, you have to have some way means of having it function.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is I think we need to know more about what, what they actually want to do and what they want to be. I don't know if that's really for us to do, it's really for those, for you folks to figure out that stuff, right?
Well, your bylaws will guide how often people, what their terms are.
That's laid out in statute.
I know, but it's, anyway, I've read somewhere where it said bylaws.
Okay.
I would assume there'd be some bylaws involved. Unless statute's covered it all, you can just say, look, the statutes will guide what we do. But. So it's up to.
I would say, as far as deciding what this group would do, I think, I mean, I have my particular interest and Judy has her own. We talked about that actually, and as a, you know, I think it depends who comes in. And if someone feels really interested or passionate about certain angles, then, you know, maybe we decide, okay, let's work on that, or that is a good thing. I don't think we have been, you know, it really does depend who comes in as part of the group and what kind of group energy there is, you know, how big, you know, I think, I expect we kind of start with something hopefully that we can actually achieve, you know. So I think it does, it does depend who, you know, comes in and takes an interest. And so it's hard to know exactly what we would start with.
I agree 100%. That's where I've seen in dealing with conservation commissions where that can be really one-sided. I mean, everyone knows I'm the ATV guy. And many town forests are controlled by conservation commissions. And if they tend to be really, you know, non-motorized, want a quiet place and, you know, it's, it's public property. So it needs to be managed for timber, it needs to be managed for conservation, it needs to be managed for recreation, it's public property. So in many communities, it works great because you have the right makeup of people. And that, that would be the important thing to have if that's going to be the task. And we do have a lot of logged property in the town of Hardwick that certainly no one, I mean, we've talked about, we don't even have active forest management program for, so there's, there's a place for it, I agree.
One, I'd even argue we don't even have an accurate list of all the property.
That's right. There again, maybe somebody, Green Mountain Power get that for us. But yeah, no, it's absolutely, I have no problem with moving forward, I think, but you need to, you need to figure it out better, all of us. You said Bill was sick though?
Yeah, he called today though, but I didn't get around to calling back, so.
So that's what we're going to do, is we're going to figure out the legality, how to make it happen.
Yeah.
And you folks are going to figure out the next, whatever, whatever you're going to do, however you want to.
What our next step be?
Right, so we, we'll be in touch about when we figure out how such a commission is formed.
You should probably be thinking about your bylaws.
I'm just reading here to see what the requirements are for that.
Right. That's what I mean, we got to figure out what they need, what they need legally.
Your governance structure, your organization?
You got to have something there.
Do you have experience with?
Yeah, I thought that, all that was laid out in statute. I mean, it says you have to have.
It's pretty well, it's pretty well.
It tells you which officers you need to have, it tells you your meetings need to be public meetings, they need to be warned, the minutes need to go to the town clerk. I mean, it's all pretty well, it's pretty clear, I thought.
The Vermont statute, I think, so if we can work on that, right?
As well as what we're, things that we can do.
Right, yeah.
Now, as far as. It's also in statute, so.
And as far as when, if we got that part, do, do ourselves and whoever might be interested in joining, would we send a letter of intent to the board or something, or how, how much the.
Typically, I think we would probably do it the way, the way we do appointments to other, all the other commissions and boards, which is solicit letters of interest from the public generally, and, and take those and then decide how many we're going to appoint, which ones. And we typically, for most appointments, we'd like people to come in and, you can send a letter, I mean, we, we've met you guys now, but generally it's nice if people come in with a letter of intent if when we're doing appointments, just so we can talk to them if we want to.
It just says here that at its organizational meeting, a conservation commission shall adopt by majority vote, those present in voting, such rules as it deems necessary and appropriate for the performance of its functions. So it has to take whatever's in the statute, whatever you want to take, whatever, whatever, whatever role you want to play, you adopt those rules to support what you want to do. Essentially is what it's saying here, is what I would say.
So the four of us are essentially agreeing that we'd like to move forward, figure out how, figure out how to do it legally. We'll take care of that part, but they really need to get their, what they're going to do, all this stuff, and come back to us and say, this is what we want to be. We want to be the conservation commission, this is what we really want to do, this is how we're going to do it. We need to know a little more about that before we say yes, but we're willing to say yes.
So I will also just throw out there in the discussion that I had ran into someone whose name I can't remember right now, who's a new, she was like seven or eight days in her job, working for the state UVM and something else. And she had been contacted by someone from Hardwick wanting to know about Emerald Ash Borer and wanting to, actually looking for that and in how that might impact Hardwick Trails specifically, but we, I talked with this person about, you know, it probably would be better to just do a general meeting, like for anybody who's interested in town and even surrounding towns, and have an educational meeting about Emerald Ash Borer and where it is currently, what's the status, what's the plan, because it's not, you know, and that's the kind of thing that we, would be great to punt to a conservation commission and say, organize this.
I'm sure the letters were sent to them.
You know, trees, existing trees in the village now, you know, I don't know if we've never done, you know, just to identify, are there ash right now that people, we need to be thinking about. Hopefully this bore doesn't get to Hardwick for a few years, but it will, it will get here, so.
Sounds good.
So I know how fast they do move, so that's something that a lot of towns, it's, you know, it's a lot, they're just dealing with it, or they got a few, identify the trees that are going to have to be replaced so you can work it out with some time and, you know, maybe replant hopefully with something else.
All right, so I guess the short, the short answer to your request is that we'll get back to you, because.
Well, they got, they can be working on.
Yep.
Yes.
If we could come to another meeting, then we, you would like to see some more specific ideas on what we would actually start on, and then.
More like generally. I don't know what you want to do, you know, what's your vision and what you're going to do. This is it, right here?
Well, that's, yes, that's.
Well, and what they can do is fairly well laid out in statute as well.
All right, I got to read the statute.
So that's your homework, you read the statute.
Well, so then we need to figure out how to actually establish this thing.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what Bill Davies is going.
Yeah, okay. Moving right along. Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Yes, yeah, cookies outside in the cold, keeping, keeping cool.
Bad coffee.
The coffee's not bad, it's just late at night.
It's not good.
It's not good. All right, item number, item number two, we have lots more exciting things to do here, you guys, come on.
You know how, how often we hear that one?
Yeah.
You could have me call you guys.
All right. Next up, is town manager to explain.
What?
Yes, I know, Bridgeman Hill Roofing Reservoir Plan, you already did that.
It's going to take like 30 seconds, I just explained it to you guys. So, I mean.
Yeah, explain it again.
You're up.
Lay it out again. We're going for a planning grant, our planning loan, which can be reimbursed from the state. It's $22,600 for the engineering, and the state has essentially agreed to refund that money if we move ahead with the bond, the bond effort and do the construction project and complete it.
Do you need us to authorize?
Yeah, I was going to say, do we need a motion?
You don't need to do anything right now, I would just wait and we'll do it next meeting, because actually you have to sign the loan.
We can't authorize you to sign it?
This, all your names are on it already, so.
All right.
Nice fancy.
We're signing it next time.
And it's a $420,000 project, and the state wants to give us back $175,000 of the project, and they're going to give us the rest of the, the rest of the loan, it would be 30 years at 0%.
So one thing we should just point out that we didn't say, we didn't cover again before, is that in the, that this, this is the old reservoir, it has a wooden truss system for a roof with tin roof on it, which, and the tin roof, and the out, from the outside is fine, but from the inside, there's a lot of humidity, and that doesn't play nicely with the wood framing of that roof. And we've had a lot of feedback about that reservoir that we really should be replacing the roof.
Well, the state identified it as a problem, and our staff have to go up every couple of years and drain the water out of it to get down in there, put up a staging and repair the, repair the struts, the struts.
Let's just put the roof on it.
Yeah, on the roof.
Let's just put the roof on it.
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
That's it.
Item number four.
All right, so number, so it'll be, so next, next month's meeting, we'll.
We'll do, we'll look at the loan agreements and then, yeah, and we'll have to get the bond language set up before town meeting.
Yep.
All right, awesome, thank you. Next, select board to declare a road name for a road that is off of Pumpkin Lane. Ben just left.
I know, I thought he was here for that.
Ben, and, and has three houses slash driveways, I imagine, there's three houses and three driveways. But anyway, so this is a private road, I assume?
Yeah.
And it needs a name for 911 emergency purposes?
If it gets three up.
And we really don't care, but they have requested.
What's the suggestion?
Sandy Lane.
I was thinking about Pumpkin Vine.
I'm thinking about Pumpkin Lane Extension. What do they want to name it?
Sandy.
They've suggested Sandy Lane.
Don't quote me on that.
Could we have a, could we have a motion to name this?
It's all good, we already don't have one.
I checked with the city.
I believe that we named this road Sandy Lane.
Oh, Lois.
Sandy.
There is one, it goes on the way to Mars.
Leishen seconds, any more discussion about the potential new Sandy Lane of Pumpkin Hill, of Pumpkin, yeah.
Why is it Pumpkin Lane though, that's a road, that's not a lane.
Well, lane, road, we've got a motion on the table. Are we discussing about?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of Sandy Lane, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That Pumpkin Lane, yes, a road, isn't that just another, it's like street road lane?
I don't think a lane is like, like what have we just made?
I think of a lane as narrower, but whatever.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I guess it's.
Do we claim that's ahead of ourselves?
It's good because we got.
I'll have to look that up too, I'm going to have like a whole week's worth of research.
You've got a lot of reading to do, Danielle.
You're going to be so smart.
Next is item four, select board to discuss amending the current water and sewer rates to formally include a shut-off rate. Does anybody, we have, I believe, the rates in here furnished by the town clerk, is that right? The old and, the old and proposed, do you guys want to hear the story?
So we would probably want to look at the low use commercial, rather commercial residential low users, is there going to be a rate for that?
We already have a commercial low users rate.
You have a commercial, but do you have a commercial residential low user rate? Do you?
No. So here's the thing, generally, we knew going into this year that this was going to be the first year of a new rate structure. I mean, we adopt new rates every year, but we knew that this year was potentially going to be a little bumpy because it's our first year billing off the meters and we established these new rate categories. In the past, I don't think we'd ever explicitly had on the rate schedule what the charge was for having, when your water was shut off.
Well, there's a slightly different rate schedule in this that we adopt every year.
It was.
And it talked about flat rate, the metered rate.
Yep.
And it talked about what it costs when we shut you off, but I don't think it talked about the cost of non-service, specifically non-service.
Right.
We're talking about people that go away for the winter.
Well, actually, I remember the rate saying 65% of the.
It did say that?
Well, that's how, how it was charged.
That's how it was charged. I don't think it, I don't think it was actually on there, but that is how it was charged in the past, was it 65%. So if you have your water shut off because either your building has gone away and.
Or you're going to Florida.
Or you're going to Florida and you don't want water in your house in case your pipes freeze and, you know, whatever. In the past, you've been billed, you're still connected to the system even though you're shut off, but you're not using water, so you're billed at a reduced rate. So somehow, when we adopted the recent rate structure, that was not explicitly called out, and even though I don't think it was explicitly called out previously, somehow it was interpreted that what we meant was that there wouldn't be any discount when your water was shut off. So the proposal is to basically.
There's no difference between the first page and the second page, other than the adding and the shut off.
That is correct.
Why do you kill so many trees? It confused me.
So the proposal is to add, just to add explicitly a shut-off water service. If you're shut off, we're going to charge you 50 bucks a quarter for water, which is approximately 65%, depending on what rate you're starting at, but it's in that same realm.
And that is the only charge because this generally is folks that go away for the winter, is the most common practice for this.
Well, it's also people that have mobile homes, that they might lease out to somebody and the mobile home gets.
So my question is, when, when, when do you suspend, how do you shut sewer service off, and when does that extra 80 come into effect?
That is when your water is shut off. You don't actually shut off sewer, but if you shut off water.
So it's actually $130 total.
Yeah.
Well, that's a big difference between.
You also need to pay.
We just told everybody it's 50 dollars to get your water shut off. Should mention that it's also an 80 dollars.
For the sewer side.
So, yeah, it's 130.
And there may be a fee to actually have them come out and shut it off.
Yeah, like 37 dollars or something like that to do that. And this is a fee you would continue to pay.
Quarterly.
Service curtailed or off. That would be 50 dollars a quarter for water and 80 dollars a quarter for sewer.
Which puts it pretty much back where it was, basically. It's very close to what it was in the past, if that makes sense.
But not what occurred this past billing, which.
No, it was at 100% this last time.
The last billing, people were, they heard feedback from people who were surprised that they got the full 100% rate when their water was shut off and they hadn't been having that before. Doug, would you have a question?
Well, it seems to me that the problem here is that you have a separate charge for sewer and separate charge for water. What if somebody comes to you and says, I just want my sewer shut off?
So we don't do that.
So why would you charge, have a separate rate then?
You are, because they're enterprise funds, they have to be charged separately, by law.
Well, a lot of people have water and not sewer.
Yeah.
And if you're within, if you are within reach of sewer, you have to be on it.
Right.
You don't have a choice.
And if your water's shut off, your sewer's probably off too.
If you're not going to, if you only have town water and not sewer, then you're not going to get charged for the sewer.
And I have to tell you, my whole career, I, I don't think I've ever seen or heard of a person wanting their sewer shut off and not their water, because you know what's? Once you do that, if you have a rental house and you do that and you don't have sewer anymore, you're violating a law.
I mean, it's common practice, same way everywhere, every, your bill is filled up through your water supply.
Right.
But you've got to have the water to go.
And if you don't pay your sewer.
It's a coming in and a going out.
It's the same as not paying your water.
It's a coming in and a going out.
The water gets shut.
But it costs less to bring it in than it does to get it out, that's the bottom line. You bring in water that's cheap, you add your stuff to it, and when you're getting rid of it down the other end, it costs more.
So, okay, so. So what I'd like to do, because there is something like, I, I don't have my numbers in front of me, I think there are something like 10 or 11 people who typically have their water shut off over the winter.
21, right? Is that, or 21? 21, right, is that, or 21 of the other?
I think it's 21 who have it permanent, essentially permanently off, but haven't, I mean, they have another option, is they could say, I just want to be permanently disconnected from the system.
Right.
But, the reason not to do that, if you're, if you're the landowner, you, the reason you would think twice is because when you reconnect, there's a connection fee that's substantial, I think it's 500.
Thousand dollars for.
Sewer.
For sewer and 500 dollars for water.
And potential not being able to get it if your volume was up at the time, which would be.
Which doesn't seem likely, but it's.
No, but it's still, you know, maybe 20 years.
If you had a connection ban for one reason or another, those people couldn't hook back on again.
Exactly. So, okay, so the, so that's part of the, so anyway, we heard feedback from folks that were surprised that their rate went up.
So, it went up quite a bit probably.
Well, it went up to 100%. And most of the people don't have meters, so they're on the old flat rate, so they're on a higher rate.
So, so the people without a meter, and they say they own two properties, the person that had one property without a meter and shut the water off, then he had a home with a meter, which is a lower rate because it's metered, he was ending up paying more for the water that was shut off at his property without the meter than he was for the water he was using at his house, so you can see me trying to answer his questions on the phone. I agree with him. This is crazy.
So it's all unsuspecting.
So this is fixing it, and then the other feedback we've had that, that is gonna be handled entirely at the town clerk's office, is some people feeling like that basically they're in the wrong category, and the town clerk is gonna handle that by adjusting them to a more suitable category.
Like if they have a commercial residential, they might be down as a low-use commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
You got it.
Right, based on the ground they're using.
Is it just the fact that they are using so little water?
Yeah, even though they're commercial or.
And because we, because she decides.
Which that's, 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 that's half, so that's quite a, that's quite a difference, right?
It is, yeah.
But you're using half the volume, so, I mean, that's why we did this, is because if you're using it, you're using it, if you're not using it, you're not using it.
And the idea is that right now, this is, I don't, I'm hoping we're not gonna revisit this again before next summer, but I'm thinking next summer, we'll revisit the whole thing again and just say, how's this working and what data do we have and how much are people using, and we may choose to, I mean, I would like to have us consider moving to a smaller base rate that covers a smaller number of gallons that have an increased unit rate, but we have to look at the numbers to see, I mean, because ultimately, we have to pay to run the system.
So that would give the lower users a little bit of a love, a little bit of.
Little bit of.
And you know, we're talking about conservation, and I didn't have the numbers when we first were going through this, but I saw the numbers the other day, we went from 108 million gallons a year down to 67 million gallons a year after, after we fixed the leaks and put the meters in.
Right.
And we still have one big improvement to do at the elementary school.
Right.
Which will probably cut us down another 3 million gallons a quarter, probably another 12 million gallons a year.
So, yeah. That doesn't count people's personal leaks, it's probably starting to fix now that they're getting their bills, that just counts the stuff that the town.
Well, I think.
But we saw conservation going on right now.
But we certainly, I've heard some stories of people who are having really, 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 really high usage and now they don't because they had their problems back.
So Alberta told us that of something like 60 calls that she got about people saying their use was really high, she was, because our, our meters log, log all this, and so she and Kenny, I guess, were able to get the data.
Right.
Get it to them and say, these are the days where you used a lot of water, and she's like, only one person came back after that and said, I, I think, you know, I, I think.
That your metering reading too much.
Right, or something like that, but everybody else would, oh.
They don't do that, by the way.
I think I know where that water went.
Or filling the pool. Or garden.
And the other thing about the meter too, it tells you when you have a leak.
Right.
As a matter of fact, you can go and data log it, you can do it for 15-minute increments for 24 hours, 48 hours, for a week, for a year, for a month, or whatever, and you can look at all the usage, and you can tell what time of night the water's going, and if you, everybody's gone to bed, 2:00 in the morning, you still got water flowing through there, it's a pretty good indication there's a leak somewhere.
Right.
So, those meters are, are smart meters and they do a really good job.
Although we should say that we're not, we're not checking everybody's usage, we're only checking it if you come to us and say, I don't understand why it's so high, then we can go back and find.
So, I make a motion that we formally include the shut-off rates for water and sewer.
Excellent.
In the rate structure.
In the rate structure, she has presented tonight.
Second?
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Time to go?
Almost time to go.
Oh, no, this budget.
Uh, next town major, oh, we're gonna do budgets? You can't go, yeah.
Budgets? No, I'm just kidding.
Let's roll with last year's.
We'd like to go with last year's.
Oh, that's not, that is, that's foreboding.
Yeah.
Uh, you gonna fire up a projector and give us a show? Excellent. Uh, we're.
Amanda, what color is your car?
We're gonna talk about that, I just.
I thought that's the reason.
I was gonna say, did you ruin my job on the seat?
Yep.
Not so bad of my face, I'm just gonna talk to you.
Danny Hale, put your phone away.
Great.
Put your phone away, turn around and piece the screen.
I don't wanna see reality.
None of it's gonna hurt, we don't have to see it.
Red, red.
My god.
So, we're gonna not do police, we're gonna do buildings instead, because I prefer that we do police when Aaron's here, so we're gonna do highway buildings and the fire department slash line items, which is together. So, buildings, not very many changes, I want to make a note that I did speak with VLCT, and while they don't have our formal rates, they did let me know that there's an estimated 20% reduction in property casualty that we'll see because we have a big loss coming off. I don't know what that loss is, but she said expect probably a 20% decrease, I didn't go a full 20%, but I did, you know, do a reduction in that on, on all of these, memorial, public safety.
I was gonna cross the board.
On, on property, yes, townhouse, the store, so basically, you know, these are the buildings we have, no changes among the operating, maintenance, repair utilities, those are pretty consistent, looking at, so basically.
So in this, wait, in this, Danny?
Yes.
Red is good.
Okay.
Yes, it means we're reducing the budget by that much, so basically, you'll notice in each building, under the VLCT, the property casualty insurance fund, that's where I, you know, we can basically go down, and like I said, she said 20%, but until we actually have that, I didn't think it was, we should actually go 20%, so there, I just took the previous budget and reduced it and.
Sorry, what building are we on here?
Right, this first one is the memorial building, so.
Do you want to shrink it down just a little bit?
Sure.
Oh, I like it. Do you like it big like that?
Okay.
It's easier for me.
So.
I have contacts, but I do need to get it 900.
So basically, keeping everything the same, a little bit increased for the custodian, which we could, and generators, given that we only spent like 50, I went down a little bit on that.
Um, that's generator maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we did a bunch of generator maintenance a few years ago, so that's, that makes sense, so.
So, I decreased, I went to 500 instead of 850, so that, compared to this current year, and everything else the same.
Are the new furnaces saving any oil? Or is it too soon to tell?
It's a question for John.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
To Danny Hale.
Question. Are the new furnaces saving any oil?
The reason we don't sit next to each other all the time. What?
Are the new furnaces saving any oil in the memorial building?
We don't know, it's too soon to tell, but we'd have to look at the gallons because the, every year is different, it's cold already.
Right, but it's certainly more efficient, much, much more efficient.
They are more efficient, but that doesn't tell us if we'll use more or less oil.
No, and our, and our oil costs are higher this year than they were last year by quite a bit because it took a fixed rate.
Yeah, but efficiency is based on like, yeah, it doesn't matter if it's hot or cold, it's.
That's how efficient the unit is when it's running.
It's had to have increased.
Um, I'm okay with a memorial building because we have, our fuel oil line is, is fairly, is a fair amount higher than the previous year, but on other buildings, I want to keep an eye on the fuel oil line because I, Eric's prediction, I was investing in fuel oil futures, I think they're gonna go up.
That's why we took a fixed rate this year instead of taking the fluctuating rate. Last year, we took the fluctuating rate because it was going down, but.
We're gonna take, we're gonna have, by the time we're in this budget we're talking about, that, by the time we're in that fiscal year, we're gonna have.
The fixed rate will be off.
It'll be a year from now.
I think the fixed rate will be higher next.
And we'll be bidding again for it.
Right.
Because this is for the winner a year from now.
Yeah.
Right.
And my guess is that, but who knows, that's just my guess.
Public safety building, we spent 3,200, fuel oil from 17 to 18, we budgeted for 5,000, I kept all of that the same and went down a little bit on the insurance.
Yep.
That looks our rate.
Custodian, wow, we don't get much for custodian, okay.
Well, no, because he splits his time between the buildings and he only, he works like 50 hours every two weeks, so it's 20, 25 hours among library, memorial building, and public safety, so, yeah.
He's inexpensive and he's good.
Yes.
He's all good.
He's excellent.
Nice to have somebody who has a feel for the water buildings, because that's what we have.
He enjoys doing it.
And does a really good job.
So, that's public safety, fire station, again, just a decrease in that, and fuel oil, I spoke with Tom and he's the one who thought we should go up 500 dollars on the fuel oil.
He's bidding up.
He's, he thinks the same thing I think.
Well, so we're gonna, yeah, we'll get to highway too, and then townhouse, again, just a decrease in insurance and a little bit of an increase in the maintenance repairs just given what we spent in the previous year, we had spent about 1,000, we budgeted 800, so it went back to 1,000 on that.
Good, that's good to, I'd like to adjust.
Um, and then, the last two, again, insurance is down a little bit and no other changes.
Um, when? Uh, it's only 300 bucks.
I know.
I was gonna say, when is the library gonna take that down?
Yeah, well, I, and I, I did say, that was one of the questions I had, is like, do we need to, is, are we still insuring that and?
Well, I think we're insuring it.
To tear it down.
Right, it's liability.
Primarily that, yet that, but the other thing is if it, if it burns or came in or something, it'll pay to clean it up, it's minimal insurance.
Right.
Right.
And the depot, sorry, depot.
Depot, just, well, like I said, we'll see a little bit of reduction in that property casualty insurance.
Alright, looks good.
Okay, so that's buildings, we're gonna move on to fire and line items.
We don't have, we don't have a town garage in there either.
No, Creary is, the plaza is.
Town garage should be in there, somewhere.
Oh, it's not.
I bet those are also buried in the.
This, probably, in the, because, yeah, because it was, was that new in this past year?
No, no, no.
Because it, this was, I mean, this is from last year's budget, so.
I'm gonna go get my tattered wire, I should have brought it up before.
Okay.
Darn it.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna move on to fire and line items in the meantime.
Yep.
Okay, so, changes in fire, so, given what we spent on labor, I did decrease that a little bit from what we budgeted in the current year by 1,000 dollars, which then reduces social security, workers' comp, based on what we spent, I went down a little bit on that, operating expenses, we, that was, was per Tom, doing a little bit more on that. Dispatch, we don't really have a sense for, so I did a 3% increase on that, and then.
It seems like we usually get a letter from dispatch before budget, yes, when we're doing budgets usually, isn't it? Anyway.
So, that, that may still change then, but.
We're, we're early.
We're ahead.
Okay, um, and then, equipment purchases and repair, basically what we did is, they wash each other out, we went up 2,000 on one but down 2,000 on the other, Tom had indicated that there's gonna need to be some, like, the suits purchased and they're a crazy amount apiece, I forget what he said, like.
Yeah.
3,000, I don't remember, some crazy amount, so, that's where that came from, so that they, there's really like, there's no net effect, they wash each other out in terms of that, and then.
He's okay with these small, I mean, sometimes, he has a backlog of, of personal equipment, I think, to, doesn't he? To buy, I don't really.
Maybe that much backlog, it's about 22,000 dollars.
Right, that was, yeah, so.
It's a cost of backlog, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't know what that is specifically.
But this is, you've been over this with Tom.
Those two figures, he and I went over, yes, and then the training I reduced only because we spent nothing last year, we budgeted for 1,000 and was looking for some areas to reduce a little bit, so we went down a little.
Okay.
Okay, alright, line items is gonna be quite a discussion, so, first and foremost, auditing, our fiscal year 18 audit is not complete yet, however, the cost of that is 21,500 dollars.
For our current year.
For, for fiscal year 18.
The one we budgeted 11, 11.
But, no, 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 that'll be fiscal year 19, we budgeted 11.5, but that means this budget is at least 10,000 dollars short on auditing.
Right, so what we budgeted 11.5 for, for this current?
For our current fiscal year.
Or at least, what'd you say, 20?
21.5 is what our fiscal year 18, and that does not count the 5,000 dollar single audit that we have to have for grant expenditures exceeding 750,000, so I'm actually gonna be bumping this up to 27,000 because we can anticipate it'll cost 21.5, again, a possible increase in inflation, I did consult with the auditors on that, and then, if we get the yellow barn grant of a million dollars, that means we're gonna go over the 750 and need a single audit again, so we really oughta plan for that.
Ouch.
Yeah, so, that's, yeah, and I'm really not sure about this item here, I, part of me thought maybe it was a typo and was supposed to be 21.5, because our audits have been running like 19 to 20-ish for the last couple of years, so I don't know.
But that's it, the, with, the last actual was 10,408.
I think that was the timing though of when it was paid out, because we made, they I think that was the timing though of when it was paid out because we made, they do progress billing. So I would say that it's probably in that fiscal, it wasn't paid in full.
Yeah, that would, uh.
It was a progress billing, yeah. That's why. It just happened to fall in that year, yeah. But no, I, I did contact.
So, so if you, but if you looked at all the, I know you're, you're probably taking this as was existing and you're moving forward, but if you went back and looked at the books.
Yep, I, twenty thousand five hundred was the previous one.
Was the actual? So that, where it says ten thousand four oh H, the actual was really twenty thousand?
Right, it's because of when it was paid out, when it was expensed.
But it was paid, that was all paid out in, so twenty thousand was paid out in one count, in one fiscal year?
I think it was split between two.
Oh, I see.
That's why it shows up.
But I, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So at the time this was done, it wasn't all paid for.
Yeah.
Because like right now, we've had one progress billing, which actually was like seventeen thousand. So we're gonna owe like another forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
But the audit usually doesn't get done until January or February, so that's why it was kind of paid into the next year at that point. So, but I did speak with them and the proposal for the current audit that's being done is twenty-one five. And then we'll be having a single audit, which is gonna be another five. So.
Okay.
So that's, we gotta deal with, we're gonna deal with that.
We're gonna be dealing with that this year because we're gonna go over about fifteen grand on that. Mm-hmm.
We're gonna go over budget. So that's, that's God, but we're, this is to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Right.
Right, that we're not.
Yep.
I'm on board. I'm with you.
Um, not a lot of changes. I went down a little bit in dog control, just based on what we had spent previously. Um, Judevine Library.
Excuse me?
Here.
Answer this only if it's on the top of your head. This doesn't require digging.
Okay.
Do you know if the income we get from dog licenses adds up to enough to pay for dog control?
I can tell you in just a moment. It's just on another sheet. Dog licenses, um, it's, oh, bear with me, it's right. Oh, it's on here, right, on this other tab here. Okay, um, oh, twenty-one hundred, not quite. Twenty-one eighteen, right here.
Yeah, but it's, it's in the same ballpark.
And then.
Really?
It was.
Right?
Twenty-five hundred, so they're two-thirds of what we're paying.
Yeah.
But we project, well, so we projected three thousand for the current fiscal year, but in, in fiscal year eighteen, we only took in twenty-one hundred on that, but that's for another day.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Judevine Library, I don't have their budget yet. They are working on it, so I just put in a few percent.
You gave them three percent. Yep, we'll see what they come up with.
Just for right now, until, yeah, until they see. Um, these amounts right here, so we talked capital funds, um, last.
Yeah.
Meeting. Um, so these right here were, were, haven't changed. That's what we anticipated. That the equipment, we're gonna go up five and.
That was after our working.
Correct. These, the only one that's in question here is this one oh nine because we, there was sort of some not finalized if these amounts, this is where the one oh nine comes from. But I know there was some discussion about buildings and whether or not that was gonna stay the same. So once that's decided, this one oh nine may be the final figure or it may need to go up more. So.
We'll add more to the capital.
Still getting that.
So right now I left it the same. Um, tax mapping, I looked into pretty consistently. We've been paying thirty-seven hundred-ish. Um, I have, I wasn't able to figure out where the fifty-four fifty came, but I did look back and do some research and so I felt comfortable going in the middle of that at forty-five hundred in case there's anything that comes up.
Yeah.
Um, no other changes. All right, so now we get down to all this yellow here. Um, so tax sale expense I wanna talk about first. Um, that twenty-three thousand dollars primarily, I believe, was to do with the patent property, the bulk of that, or at least six thousand of that. Definitely wasn't anticipated. We didn't budget any, anything for the current year. Um, I put in five thousand. Maybe that's not enough, um, but we definitely need to have something in there, given what we spent in fiscal year eighteen. So that's topic for discussion.
We cleaned up a bunch of tax sale stuff too.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, the expense associated with that was twenty-three thousand. I don't know what the delinquency looks like right now. Are we, yeah, maybe Amanda could get that. But something to think about, if, we should have something in there. But does it need to be five or does it need to be fifteen based on what we spent before? We probably should get an idea of, had I thought of it beforehand, but.
Are those, this is tax sale expense?
Yeah.
So is that legal expense or is also the expense?
No, it's expensive when we bought that at tax sale.
Well, and actually the patent property, I have that right, or that, that's a separate expense. Six thousand sixty-eight dollars is what we spent on that in fiscal year eighteen. Um, so.
What's the twenty-three though?
I don't know what the twenty-three is.
No, what, what? That would be some legal fees, I'm sure. I don't know what the breakdown is of that.
Well, we did use, we did use an attorney to do the eviction and process it, but that wouldn't have been that kinda money.
Was that the property in East Hardwick?
Oh, yes, we had to, we had to remove a trailer, mobile home.
That's what I just said.
That's what you're talking about. I wonder, I thought you were talking about patents, those.
So that might be an isolated incident.
No, it's the one in East Hardwick.
Yeah, East Hardwick.
So we.
The six thousand was just a tax.
That was seven thousand dollars, you took it rid of it.
All the attorney fees are in the upper.
The six thousand sixty-eight was the patent property specifically. This was something else.
That was all, the patent, what's listed as patent property is actually a tax sale expense. It's just broken out as a separate, no, that's not a tax sale expense.
That's not how it was when I ran the report.
Those purchase the patent property, right?
Right.
At tax sale.
Well, I guess we'd have to look at that a little bit more. That might be some other expenses associated with that.
So you'd like to see what the breakdown is of the twenty-three thousand then? Like what that consisted of?
What's in that twenty-three?
Sure.
Patent property, which I, we should rename.
Yes.
Um, but because essentially it's property that we've all decided that we wanna retain and do something.
So we should name it by the address.
We should name it by the address and, and then, yeah, that was just the money that was paid in the tax sale. So I'm just confident that there's quite a bit of attorney's fees in that upper number. And we should put it all into that property.
Oh, right.
See, I was saying, anything it took, anything we spent on that property.
Town property, Kerry Road.
We can look back and see what's been, um, what's been coded to that.
But it'd be a great time to clear that out.
So, just to say, Doug, can you have a question?
Yeah, actually, no, comment or a jump ahead from the, uh, the GIS, Wilkins is getting the same thing. They're getting CAI to look at doing their GIS and tax mapping. They were quoted at forty-five hundred and what they found is a range from thirty-five hundred, almost up to eight thousand from Johnson. As far as what CIA charges, high burden being five thousand, so.
I think it depends on the number of properties that you're dealing with.
That would give you an idea based on what.
And we're outdone, that's just for us, it's just, uh.
Our's a maintenance fee.
That's a maintenance fee.
Yeah, that's what we already poured on, so.
Okay, so John and I have talked about this, that, um, there's gonna be expense to take down that property on Kerry Road. And so do we wanna put that as a line item? And we're thinking thirty grand to do that, so.
That should easily.
That's a start, yeah. I mean, I think we can do.
My only question is, is, does it belong in here?
Where's its capital?
Yeah. I guess it belongs in here. I don't know.
Well, you could do it in capital and save, and save, and save it up in the capital because you're doing a long, what you're tearing down is gonna be gone a long time. Anything, I mean, put it simple. Anything that's gonna be a longer than a twenty-year project life could, should go into capital, so.
But we might be, you know, we might not, it doesn't matter. I was gonna say the property, we'd wanna retain it, probably will forever.
Yeah, only problem here is if you don't use it, you'll lose it to the fund balance, but you could always pull it back out of the fund balance. But if you're doing it in capital, you get to retain the money if we were under.
Or if, especially if we think that, you know, if the possibility of this not happening next year.
I was gonna say, is it easier from an accounting standpoint to, to keep it here for one more year? Um, as we get the property cleaned up and as, you know what I mean?
Cause we're gonna do.
It's easier to do accounting in this and there's enough capital. I don't know.
Well, so will we definitely tear that down in fiscal year twenty? Like, is that gonna happen? So that's, that I think would be the, I think that would be the point at which we would decide whether to put in capital
But if we only put ten grand in, then it should be shifted into capital even in line items.
Or fifteen.
Or fifteen years. So I guess that's.
Or if we, even if you wanted to dump the whole thirty in, you could put it into capital. And then if it doesn't happen next year, it's still sitting there on that line.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas this way, like.
Or if you run a bit short, you can pull a little bit out of another project. It's not gonna happen for a couple of years and get the job done.
Yeah.
Right, and you're managing.
Where here, you could, you wouldn't be able to do that so well. You had to pull out the amount.
I mean, it's certainly, I had no problems.
Makes sense to go in capital.
I'm looking at keeping it long-term, yeah, moving it.
I hate to agree with Eric, but.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
Go ahead, get on.
All three of us are once.
So we're gonna take it out of line items and put it into capital.
Put it somewhere in capital.
So my only question is, that six thousand still is gonna go into tax expense for this year, right? That's what you're gonna do with that?
Well, that was seventeen to eighteen. That was specifically, that's good, that's done.
That's already gone.
It'll be off next.
So if we come here to the capital general fund, then we would need to, that's gonna change that one oh nine.
Yeah.
Um, we would put that into probably.
A building.
Buildings, maybe?
Or property, call it whatever it is, stuff.
Well, buildings, public works, general government.
Could be Kerry Road.
Could be.
That's what she's calling it.
Oh, yeah.
So, so then if we did, are you thinking like ten thousand over the next three years for that?
I'm thinking, it depends when we think we're gonna tear it down. I'm thinking I would only, if, if we don't think we're gonna do it next year, I'd like to do fifteen, fifteen. But if we think we're gonna do it next year, let's put in the whole thirty.
I, you know, my vote is to get it ready so if we have an opportunity to do something, whether we have the opportunity to do something. I mean, at some point we gotta invest unfortunately.
Just see what the stresses are on the budget when you get to that.
Right, at the end, right, throw it in there now and if it doesn't work, we, we, we'll stretch it out.
I mean, that's the, the whole thing.
Right.
First pass and let's put some numbers in there and see what sticks.
Yeah, that's right. And then.
No, let's do thirty.
Yeah.
Oh, right off, okay.
We're gonna do thirty once.
I mean, and that's.
Is just a guess and then we're gonna see, we're gonna see what that does to everything.
We're dreaming at this point.
So then that puts that at one thirty-nine, okay, so then.
At this point, we're still dreaming.
Right. We haven't, our reality has not set in.
Yeah, that's right. So if you get it.
Which then, okay.
Okay, and then, then you can zero out that, yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
Um, reckon.
What's up with rec?
Yeah.
I just, I don't have their budgets yet, so I left it the same for right now and, and I will know more.
Is that? Why, why is it showing zero the year before? That's my confusion.
Right.
I don't know if it was in a line item. Did you bring that book?
Harvick Frey shouldn't have been zeroed there, should it?
You know, I drove by the old skate rink today and I, out of the corner of my mind, didn't really notice the skate rink.
Not set up? Winter came early?
I don't know.
Nobody.
No, they're just not filled in.
Weren't they gonna buy, did they buy that thing last year, the boards?
No, I don't know.
Remember they were gonna buy it?
I got my own boards.
You do?
I need to just plug those in, okay.
They're part of my salvage operation.
Reduce, reuse, recycle?
I just need to plug those in, actual numbers.
So I would expect, I don't know anything about the.
Those were their actual numbers, Casey?
I just have to plug in the previous year and then these are the current, the current budget. And so I just made them the same until I know more. Um, I expect to have both of those for the December sixth meeting. So then I would know more. Um.
Those don't really change, right?
Rescue squad, I've reached out to, um, didn't get a response, so I put in three percent for right now.
Sounds good.
Until that's what I could work with. Okay, and then, so we've done, and then we're gonna do highway.
Should've put in for one percent, they would call you sooner. Negative one percent.
Okay. All right, so starting with the top, um, three percent increases, um, for salaries and then the corresponding.
Expenses.
Yep. Um, all right, so, um, I just wanna note health insurance really figures in. Um, so we have a change in staff.
Oh, okay.
Um, adding a family plan, basically, and then the increase, that's really what it amounts to.
What's, do you have a percentage increase?
Um, it's, it's gonna be, we've already got the nineteen rates for MVP. It's three percent, but we have to figure they run calendar year and we run fiscal year. So I've done this based on five percent because at the beginning of two thousand twenty, which is the second half of the fiscal year, it will probably go up again. So I did five percent, which will get us through the twenty fiscal year.
Right, three percent increase is actually very low for health insurance.
Yeah, not bad. Um, but the deductibles went up and we'll get to that.
That does happen.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
So, um, we can talk briefly about that, but, um, okay, so then that was the big thing there. Um, I did go through this with Tom, so we, you know, bumped a couple of things down a little bit, thousand five hundred. Um, his main requests were, so culverts definitely needed some more money for culverts based on what we spent. So we went up to four thousand from the current twenty-five hundred.
I think that should be more.
You think forty-five hundred?
Maybe we'll get grants.
Don't you wait till you see the end of what the budget looks like?
Yeah, yeah.
We got some other one coming up here.
We got Tom to kick in to ask for more, which is good because he needs those culverts.
Um, and then, you know, a couple little things here, street skate maintenance. That's kinda like the downtown beauty, I believe, is what that is, or is that down here? Let me just look.
That's a good positive thing to do.
No, it's not, but it's, yeah, street skate maintenance. So we, so we needed to go to fifteen hundred based on what we spent. Um, then, okay, so here's the other things. Heating fuel for highway, um, we need to bump up to thirty-five hundred per Tom because we're getting the new heaters in the highway garage.
That's, yeah, I, yeah. Do you think that's all it's gonna cost?
I think it costs more than that.
I think so too. I think it's gonna be at least a good five grand or six.
Okay, well, we, we can.
Five, throw five at it, see if that sticks.
Alrighty, um, summer gravel, he asked for five thousand more, um, on that.
Good. Holy cow!
And chloride, an additional three thousand on chloride.
Yeah.
Um, and then these last two, um, winter sand, an additional three thousand and the salt, ten thousand. As we, as you may recall, at the other meeting, we talked about the price going up significantly.
You're opening up the cash register.
Yeah, it is.
So, so that's, that's what we're looking at for the highway.
Hang on now, do we have, um, I'm thinking, oh, maybe it's in.
You know, I know why, I know why you're, we're going with this because in the fire department, we took out the heating, fuel and utilities and moved them to the buildings, but in highway, they're in this. So we could certainly move them out to the buildings. I could take them out of here.
They're in the capital as a building, but not whatever.
So I could just take, take this out of here and create a buildings line for them in, over here.
So why, why do we put six thousand in the budget for Moen and we spent six thousand, but we lowered it to fifty-five hundred?
Because, um, John and I received a bid, um, from somebody that called and asked if they could bid it and the bid was fifty-one hundred.
This is for cemeteries?
We're gonna be bidding it out in the spring.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, all right. Carry on.
Well, no, we still, of course, yes, we're still gonna bid it out, but I'm saying that's specific one.
Yeah.
My question on the way, patching and paving, we went, why?
Apparently John put a bid into the law next year.
Why did we go?
I'm saying anybody.
Why did we go down on patching, paving below our last actual?
Where are we? Where? Right, yeah, red, look at the red.
Oh, it's gotta be up, it's gotta be four thousand anyway, because that's gonna, the cost of, uh.
Paving's gonna be up.
Paving's probably gonna go up a little bit.
Keep that the same.
New hit for gas prices, only two forty. Slow down.
So we're gonna go over there for fuel?
No gas.
Drive all the way over there again.
Yeah, cheaper if you drive there for fuel. All kinds of money.
Did you read the number in the lower right-hand corner?
No, I can't read that. Seven point five eight. This is just one department though.
Well, yeah, that is more, you know, an importantish one.
It's a very important one and it's one that has needed more money for ground.
Yeah, well, I'm all for it.
So my question that actually was, what I was thinking is, it seems to me that somewhere we have in here, maybe it's in capital, we have a line for, um, spring stone, don't we?
Um, mud season material or?
Cause we've been getting him to buy, he's, yeah.
Right here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. There we go.
Spring boulders.
They're not boulders anymore. They're crushed. They're good. They're much better. There are no more, there are no boulders anymore.
Used to look like apples.
Just looks good.
It did kinda look like apples.
Yes, right here.
It's like apples and oranges. All right, so that's where we are with that. Is that all we're looking at tonight?
Good job.
Um.
No, we, what do you have, we have anybody else?
I mean, I can do the police errand in here, but.
That's gonna scare you.
Um, actually, no, I don't think it will that bad. It won't. Um, so I'm just gonna scroll down here so you can see the overall. So, I mean, I'll go back up, but the overall is that.
Not bad. That's what we want. And then write that down.
So.
Can we talk about, so I just have a request, we, we grill him.
Okay, so.
What about, what's office and payroll get us? What's that door get us?
Does that mean?
Yeah.
Because I think that's one we should just poke at really quick.
Where are we looking at?
Office and payroll.
Office and payroll, okay, so.
Office.
So.
Your salary's not broken out?
No, included with everybody else.
Right. But my point being is, uh, we're gonna have a new town manager. Salary's gonna be at least as much as John's and then John doesn't have any insurance and then we see twenty-five.
And so that's why you're gonna see this.
She's got an insurance built in there, right?
Mm-hmm, I do. I have a family plan insurance built in there.
So you built in the big one. All right, just so we have it there.
Yes, and.
So what's that bottom right-hand number?
Cause we don't know.
And the salary range that you discussed, I use the bottom number, so, I mean.
Of course, enough. I mean, the insurance is gonna be the big dinger if we need it. So what's our bottom right-hand corner say?
Um, well, well, so this three.
Well, it's, no need to argue if it's not bad. Oh, see what I'm saying?
All right, so this, this was an area of discussion here. So Lister Supplies, I was questioning on whether that was gonna decrease with the new assessor position. on whether that was going to decrease with the new assessor position.
I bet not, because they're going to charge us for every, right?
Every paper slip.
Okay, so we think we'll leave that the same. Okay, and then, so, not a lot of changes really down here at all.
What we're thinking about, go back up to listers, what we're thinking about doing with listers for the first couple of years, if we go to the assessor, is to pull money out of the, out of the reappraisal fund, to cover the costs of the, of the assessor, until we can work up the budget over three years to, to pay for that person. That way, it makes it a lot easier on folks that have taxpayers.
So we're going to, the listers are, we're not going to be paying 12, 2, we're going to be paying what? 300, 3,000, or what?
Yeah, you might be paying them just a stipend to be there.
Right.
Yeah, we could change it to a stipend.
Well, I think we'd want it, that's the way the rest of us get it.
Because you don't, after you have, if you go to an assessor, you don't want three listers showing up working 10, 15 hours a week.
Not unless it's a different, on a stipend.
Right, right.
In which, in which case, we hope they would, too, but... I'm just, I don't know, I guess we weren't ready to do this one tonight, but clearly they've gone decent.
When we talk about the assessor, we're going to have to meet with, you guys should meet with the listers.
Some of this stuff is going to have to be put up somewhere. Well, I mean...
Well, that's what everything else looks like, but probably...
Well, what I'm seeing, 7, 9, 18% increases.
Why are you focusing on those instead of the 3?
Because if they're all 3, then we end up with 3, but if half are 3, and the other 3 are 9 and 8 and 10...
Is that, is that negative right there?
Can you show us the negative?
There's a negative right there, isn't there?
Do you really want to see it?
Well, I just wondered, I don't want to be freaked out, but...
Like, the tax this year, is what you want to see?
No, I don't like that one.
Oh, not bad.
No, that's not bad.
It all depends on what happens with the...
Because we still got a lot of stuff in there.
For the grand list, too, you know?
We may not need to...
Did you adjust the grand list up?
Um, I did it as, it says of, um...
I thought that number would be like...
Uh, what is it, as of 10 something? Let me just look.
We're on the right track.
We'll massage it.
Uh, as of, oh, sorry.
We make an assumption, you think, on the grand list every year, and you're usually right, because last year wasn't, we weren't quite as right.
That was as of 1031.
That's because you're still negotiating taxes for people from their reappraisal.
We know.
I know. No, I thought it wasn't from the reappraisal, I thought it was, um...
I feel better now.
Current use that bid us.
Current use didn't, actually, current use pays $154,000.
Oh, that's right, they, they tried...
They almost, if we had a question, if they would have bid us by $60,000, then they found a mistake.
Right.
Okay, so...
Can you show us the one, not this one, but the next tab over the...
Revenue and budget?
Yeah, so, what's at the bottom of this?
Okay.
If everything's bubbled through.
Today, yesterday, I mean, today, too.
I thought we did, too. So that's... Yeah, so that, that may not, you know, may not be where we need it to be, but it's not horrible.
So that's the total, all of the budget?
That's, yeah, with everything through, well, except that we haven't been through some of the budgets, and it's all still a little subsidiary.
Right now.
A lot of things don't tend to go down, but passive went down for our buildings, so there's that.
Right.
But then our workman's comp went up 10%.
Is this like, just you go over first draft, and then going forward, you're going to re-do the numbers again for these particular departments, or?
So it's just a W, yes, because this is just a first pass. And this is, so Casey's been doing research on what we can expect moving forward, she's put these numbers in, and then select board's getting familiar with it, and then we'll go back through, like, for now, it's like, okay, let's just try to make these kind of realistic.
The town heads what they need.
Yep.
What, what they need, and then we have to...
But then, but then, we don't want, yeah, we may have to find places to economize.
I mean, clearly, we're not going to get cushions for our chairs this year.
So, we discussed this, we have an elevator, and there are chairs downstairs with cushions, and you just have to move them.
I'm going to add in.
Lucian will drive and get them from somewhere.
I have, I've done it.
That's right.
I just messed it.
All right.
All right, so, I think that, unless you have...
So this is...
Why is passive?
They went down because something fell off.
I mean, pilot, not passive.
Oh, pilot.
It payment and low taxes, um...
You know what it means, but why is, why is it saying it?
The really, the only one we get is Hardwick Electric, and from what I understand, the budgeted number here has to do with a sort of donation that we received in the past.
It was assumed it was going to be 10,000 this year, we've never gotten 10,000 ever. We've gotten 5,000, so it's just bringing in line of reality.
And so we really can't count on that money, because...
Because it's voluntarily paid, some of the years we don't get the money.
And so we really need to back that back out and go with what we, what we know we'll get.
Well, I will put it in as 2,500, and, and then hope we get 5.
So, I, so that's, that's what that reduction is.
That's what it would have been for 10, 5.
Um, and then delinquent charges, I lowered based on what we received in the previous year to match that, so trying to be realistic here. Dog licenses, again, I kind of went similar to what we had the year before.
Does this state dog license rates, this state?
Yeah, I believe we...
Yes, I believe so, and that we get to keep a small portion of it, yeah.
The thing is, when we, we don't really have an active dog person right now with, with John Launch, because of some issues he has, but that, when he's more active, we bring in more money.
And then the, the reduction in the governor highway safety grants, we did get that grant again, but only for the op and DUI piece of it, not equipment, that's why it's going down. We got 6,000 for equipment, which we used to buy those speed control signs and whatever, so we're not getting the equipment piece this year, which is why it's been reduced. So, and then, like I said, this isn't quite final, because I've got a few, the library is somewhere in here, I think, or actually, maybe they're not, but, so there's some few, few pieces to be plugged in, but a pretty good start.
So you're going to have, those folks have to, what's their deadline to have their budgets in?
Next, next meeting.
Yeah, I asked for them to have it to me a few days prior to the December 6 meeting, so that I would...
Because electronically, it'd be nice to have these before the meeting, so we can kind of look them over.
Review.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting to the point where...
If you have an update, like, it's even just a day before the next meeting, and you